The Jackson School Public School Boarding is now, board meeting is now called to order. We have six members present, therefore we have a quorum. I just want to welcome all of our administration leaders to the boardroom, back in the boardroom tonight. Thank you all for being here. This is how we will be running board meetings going forward as we have, again, students and teachers back in the building. I also know, right now, we don't currently have the ability to do closed caption, so I'll just ask that when, individual speaking, that they remove their mask, but if they are at the board table or not, then I'd ask that masks be back on again, so that people can see our mouths when we're speaking. So with that, we have all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Ms. Williams.
Second.
Okay. I believe that was Dr. Luckett, and seconded by Ms. Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
It's been moved and seconded, and it's been, the motion's been approved with the minutes.
I can just barely hear.
Okay. I'll speak up, Mr. Figures. Again, we had an opportunity, so we just approved the agenda. We have all had an opportunity to review the minutes outlined. These are the August 17th, 2021, regular board meeting, and the August 24th, 2021, special board meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I believe that was Ms. Johnson moved, and Ms. Dr. Luckett seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May's? There being none, the motion is approved. I'm also getting a note that there is a bit of a delay, and I know that, again, we've got board members who are on the phone. Again, we'll continue to work through this format. So Dr. Green, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Seback, to all of our board members, JPS administrators, who are with us this evening and watching, to our other staff members, our parents, our scholars, and community partners. Thank you for joining us this evening. We'll begin, as we typically do, with a video presentation from our instructional television team, and we'll begin there.
JPS is now offering a virtual option for scholars. Parents with children in grades pre-K through 6 who cannot receive the COVID-19 vaccination can now choose a virtual option for their children. The JPS Board of Trustees approved the decision during the special board meeting. The virtual learning option began September 2nd and will continue through December 21st. JPS Middle Schools will host a COVID-19 Vaccination Blitz on September 8th and 9th for first doses only. Pfizer vaccines will be available to parents, faculty, and staff, and the local community. Here are the dates and times. September 8th, Brinkley, Kirksey, and Witten will host vaccinations from 9:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. Powell, Chastain, and Peoples will host vaccinations from 12:30 p.m. until 2:30 p.m. On September 9th, Blackburn, Cordozo, North West, and Bailey A-PAC will host clinics from 9:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. Clinics from early September administered a total of 227 vaccinations. The clinics are in partnership with the Mississippi State Department of Health, Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity, and Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. Cadet Elizabeth Hawkins, a Moore High School senior, is a 2021 recipient of the Legion of Valor Bronze Cross for Achievement Award. The honor is presented to top Army JROTC cadets during their senior year. Scholars at Shirley Elementary received a huge donation, thanks to the Jim Hill Cheerleaders. The cheer team donated school supplies and 100 book bags to the school. The squad received the donations by hosting a school supply drive that brought in donations from four local businesses. Those businesses are BQ Stables LLC of Clinton, Traveling With Tea, We Work Hard LLC, and The Consulting Management Group LLC. JPS and Shirley Elementary are thankful for the generous donation. Marshall Elementary scholars were also gifted with backpacks to school supplies. Junior League of Jackson volunteers donated 320 backpacks to the school, and each book bag was filled with school supplies. The generous donation arrived just in time for the scholars' first day back to school. Three JPS teachers are now members of the Mississippi Department of Education's Mississippi Teacher Advisory Council. Congratulations to the honorees, Vicki Latham of Spann Elementary, Lindsay McQueen of Dawson Elementary, and Candace Taylor of Brinkley Middle School. The council was created by MBE to contribute to the success of teachers statewide. Two outstanding JPS leaders are celebrated as WK Kellogg Leadership Graduates. Congratulations to Dr. Robert Luckett, Secretary of the JPS Board of Trustees, and Mia Faulkner, Director of the Jackson Public Schools Partners in Education Department. Dr. Luckett and Mrs. Faulkner completed an 18-month fellowship with WK Kellogg to qualify for the honor. The district's official mobile app is now available. Get access to news, the district's directory, and much more. Download it on Google Play and the Apple App Store. Search for Jackson Public Schools MS. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website at www.jackson.k12.us. Follow us on Facebook at Jackson Public Schools, and on Twitter at JPS District. You can also watch all JPS programming on our YouTube channel at JPS ITV, and on Comcast Channels 18 and 19.
Going to ask you, can we get a little more volume on the microphone? Okay, I think that's a little better. Checking with those who are on, thank you. That's helpful. Checking with those on the phone to see if they can hear us any better. They can let us know.
I can hear.
Great, thank you. I'm sorry, I've lost my notes just that quickly.
I can't hear well.
Okay, we'll try to speak up a little bit in the microphones in the room here. I want to thank the team for the video presentation, and again, just excited with all the things that are happening, continuing to happen and unfold throughout the district as we continue in this year. It's hard to believe we've already completed four weeks of schooling. It's about, I believe it's 10%, I believe it's 10% of our, of our school here is already complete. It's a little scary. But excited that we're moving, moving forward here. So, as you know, our Jackson Public Schools is now offering a virtual option, learning option, to all of our scholars in pre-K through 6th grades. We're offering this option in response to the rising COVID-19 cases, especially pediatric cases, and growing concerns of our stakeholders, particularly about our scholars who are ineligible for vaccination. A total of 1,553 parents selected the virtual option for our scholars, and that represents about 14% of our pre-K through 6th grade population. Again, it's about 1,553 selections for the virtual option, and that's about 14% of our pre-K through 6th grade. And so, while that's a sizable number to manage and to support, we're pleased to be able to provide this, this level of support and this option to our families who needed that and wanted that. And we're also very pleased that many of our families are continuing to engage with us in person, even in these really difficult and trying times. As a, just as a anecdotal update as to how things are going, we've got, you know, we basically experienced another, some first days of school, when we launched on Thursday. And so, we got some wonderful feedback from some of our team members and families. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And from others, some frustrations about, you know, exactly how do I, do I participate? When are we starting? We heard from at least a few parents, like, well, want to make sure that we're communicating as much as we can, and also encouraging folks to access information on our website and through the various media that our schools are using. From one of our principals, Principal Delacy Bridges, from Lester Elementary School, she wrote that "The experience has been promising. Teachers have been collaborating across schools and grade bands to ensure that scholars can not only access the virtual platforms and that they're sharing scholar data, but also that they have the same learning experiences as their traditional peers." And that's one of the things that we were very concerned about and very determined to, to ensure for our scholars who are plugging in virtually, that they too have robust learning opportunities, and that our teachers are able to engage with them in ways that unlock their, their learning and potential. And so, pleased to hear that. Obviously, we have had some challenges, and parent meetings and conferences have helped to address most of those challenges and concerns that we've been experiencing thus far. We also heard from several, well, from all of our middle schools as well, who we've had some, it seems a kind of a mixed bit of experiences with some scholars being right there on time every day, each of the past few days, and some other scholars who have not been plugging in consistently, and so we're continuing to work with those scholars and those families. We are experiencing some district-wide challenges with our connectivity, and that's something that our team has been working, really since the start of school, and even over weekends, continuing to troubleshoot and identify ways to improve in that area. And so, we know that that has been lifted up as a challenge, but we do want to just continue to encourage folks and thank them for, for their patience as we've worked through those various challenges. So as a reminder, our virtual scholars are expected to remain virtual, in the virtual space, through the end of this semester. That's through the end of December. And also, our virtual scholars are not eligible to participate in field trips, or district-provided after-school programs, or extracurricular activities, to include athletics. And that was part of the agreement that our parents signed on to and for. And for those who continue to learn and work in our buildings, obviously, we're continuing to do all that we can to keep them safe, and implementing our various COVID-related procedures and protocols. That's inclusive of our disinfecting procedures that we utilize daily, as well as the entrance and exit, and other protocols that we've, we've shared previously. And as you saw in the video, we're also continuing to provide vaccination opportunities for members of the JPS community. Very pleased and thankful to the Mississippi Department of Health, Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, as partners in hosting the COVID-19 Vaccination Blitz, that will be held at all of our JPS Middle Schools on September 8th and 9th. Please go to our website for more information on dates and times, and locations for those vaccination events. But we're excited, again, to allow that for, and to provide that as a first-dose Pfizer vaccine to our parents, to our scholars, team members, and other Jackson community members. And so, it's to anyone who wants to access their vaccination, their first-dose Pfizer vaccination, and again, you can go to our website for more information about those. And speaking of vaccinations, in our last board member, or board meeting, board members, you'll recall that we had some discussion around the possibility of mandating vaccinations for our staff members. Our city is moving forward with this. In fact, I spoke with the mayor today, as well as members of his cabinet, as they are continuing to roll out their vaccination mandate for, for all city employees, and I believe there, somewhere in the order of 22, 2300 employees. And so, they've got a fairly large number of folks that they're working with as well. We spoke with, as I said, the mayor and his team today, and we've been watching and listening, and speaking with other large districts and other entities who have been working to implement some sort of a vaccination requirement. Our team has continued discussions internally and investigations as to how this might be operationalized for Jackson Public Schools employees, and we've drafted a possible policy language that would include two major components, board members. And those components are as follows. The first, obviously, is to require all JPS employees to either show proof of vaccination, and right now, that's contemplating showing that proof of vaccination by September 30th of 2021, the end of this month, or to submit to weekly COVID testing. And exemptions to that policy would be granted for those who are eligible for Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADA accommodations, or for those with seriously-held religious beliefs against vaccinations, as provided by the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Title VII. And for those who would, who are not able to show proof of vaccination, the COVID testing would be made available during off-duty hours for all of our employees at no cost to them. But it would be during off-duty hours. So that's the first major component of the, of the policy. The second would be that we would provide administrative leave for employees who are vaccinated, if they have a breakthrough positive case, or if they have some sickness that requires them to be off work, again, related to COVID, that we would provide administrative leave for those employees. Unvaccinated employees, however, would not be eligible for the administrative leave unless they qualify for the ADA accommodation, or the Civil Rights Title VII accommodation for seriously-held religious beliefs against vaccinations. That's the policy as we've currently contemplated it. We will be sharing this policy online, as we typically do with draft policies, to get some public comment on those. We will also have some discussion with our, with focus groups. I have two focus groups that are scheduled for this week, to get some additional feedback from our staff members regarding this policy. While we see over and over, in several districts and organizations, public and private, state and local, even federal organizations throughout the country, moving towards the, a requirement of this sort, we do want to be measured and thoughtful in our contemplation of this. We do want to speak with, in depth with members of our team, as well as by the larger community, to provide us some feedback on our, on our policy. But those are the two major components of the policy as we've drafted it thus far. We're excited to have this conversation. We know that this is a bold move. We're also watching and listening to the CDC, and all of the push and challenge for us to surround those young people who are not yet eligible for a vaccine with adults and older individuals who are eligible for the vaccine, just to try and keep all of us safe, or safer. This is, this is what I wanted to share with you this, this evening, board members. I'll pause here because I'm confident that there are some questions or thoughts, and I'm happy to take those at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Board members, are there questions about any elements of the superintendent's report?
Dr. Seback, I would just say to the superintendent, thank you and your team for being so diligent in pursuing this and getting this information. This is very encouraging, and I'm glad to see this moving forward. Just a point of clarity, on the timeline, if, you know, we, of course, we take public comments, we consider this through the policy committee, we bring it back to the board. The idea is that this would be implemented by September 30th?
Yes, sir. So our plan would be to come back to the board with, with any next steps or proposal at the next board meeting.
Thank you.
Board members, are there other questions for Dr. Green?
This is Cynthia Thompson. I just had a, I wanted to get clarity, make sure I heard what I, what I heard. It's hard to hear on the phone, so I just want to make sure I'm hearing correctly. So the, the proposal would be for employees to show proof of vaccination, or be tested weekly. And then also, to, to offer administrative leave for those who may have a breakthrough case of COVID.
Yes, ma'am. That, that is the, that is the proposal.
For those that are vaccinated.
For those that are vaccinated, yeah. That's the breakthrough. They're vaccinated and, and have a positive case. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm happy to take any additional questions or reactions, board members. Dr. Green, I do have a few questions. When you say a weekly test, what is that, what is that actual?
So, we are, we have been working with a couple of providers to kind of think through exactly how we would stand this up. The requirement is that, the requirement would be within a week, at some point within the week, that individuals would be tested. Now, the ideal situation would be, if I were the unvaccinated individual, that I would get tested every Monday, to ensure that it's, you know, exactly a week between the tests. The reality is that with the numbers, perhaps, and we really don't know at this point, we're gathering more and more information, but with the numbers of individuals, if we assume that we're about 50 or so percent vaccinated currently, which is actually a little higher, I believe, than, than we are in the city or the county, but if that's about, if that holds true for our staffing, for our employees, then that's about 1,700 people who would need to be tested every week. And so, those numbers, it would be hard to ensure that individuals get that testing on those exact dates. But we would allow for testing within the week for individuals moving forward, and they would have to do that on their, on their time, but we would provide for the resource. We would provide the, the testing for them. And of course, we would get the, any, any negative tests, and confirmation from the individuals that our employees have been tested.
So will JPS employees, how would we get the data?
That would be through our agreement with the, with the providers.
So, so employees would need to go to one of the contracted providers of the test?
Right, and the, the actual details of exactly where the testing would be done is still being worked through, but our, our effort is to create as many testing sites or opportunities for our, for, again, because we've got a fairly large staff, as many sites for individuals to be tested as possible.
And are these rapid tests or PCR tests?
I believe they're rapid. Yes.
Okay. What happens if someone does not submit a test?
We would treat this, this policy as any other policy that our, our staff, that individuals have to follow, that employees would have to follow. And so, we would address it as a, as a breach of a policy, and address them as such.
Okay. I believe that's all I have at this time.
Can you hear?
Yes, ma'am. I think we may have lost you, though.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, thank you. I'm, I'm having problems with, with, this is Bob or hell he is. So you can, you hear me? Okay.
I can hear you, Ms. Big.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that I heard you correctly. Now, this will apply to all employees of the district?
Yes, ma'am. All, all JPS employees.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no further questions or? Dr. Green, actually, you have one more.
Yes, sir.
When does, when does the, the admin leave start? So, sounds like, assuming the policy goes through at the next board meeting, as of September 30th, employees will, employees will need to share proof of vaccination by September 30th? And, and does the administrative leave kick in once you show proof of the vaccination? Is that how, so let's say, let's say someone is, someone hears this tonight, and, and, you know, next week, they get their first shot, but they don't get their second shot until after September 30th? What's, what's the protocol if they have a breakthrough case in between, between the first and second shots before they're fully vaccinated?
We haven't, I don't believe we've contemplated that fully in this policy, but that's something we can absolutely clarify. Obviously, we want people to be vaccinated. We want to encourage vaccination, and so, if, if individuals begin that process now, that's certainly something we can figure out how to address that here.
Okay.
If individuals who are willing and able, again, if they, if they have a need for an accommodation, then we want to know that as well, but for all other individuals, if they're willing to work towards vaccination, then I would imagine that's something we'd want to address as well.
Okay.
Okay. There are no other questions for me. Board members, I appreciate your time, your attention this evening. Look forward to coming back to you with more information on, on these matters. And thank you, Dr.
Sure thing, Dr. Green. There are, I do have, while we're on the superintendent's report and we're talking about COVID, I do have a couple other questions, just in general. You mentioned Wi-Fi and connectivity, so it sounds like the team is working on that in schools where there are challenges. Have gotten some feedback on, on some of those challenges. Also, wanted to ask questions around how we are reaching our students who are on quarantine? If someone is on quarantine for up to 10 days, and I just wanted to check in and ask how we're verifying that they have access to the coursework, the, the instruction? Those are my first two. And then, I guess my last question would be, any update on cases from the last week? Are, how are we doing in terms of managing spread in schools? Any, any updates that you may have there as well?
Yes, sir. Maybe I'll take them out of order.
Okay.
Let's see here, if I have it still pulled up. I'll take them out of order. So in terms of, what was your second? The first question was, I'm sorry.
First question was connectivity.
Connectivity, okay. So connectivity, the cases, and?
Quarantine.
Quarantine, instruction. And so, in terms of connectivity, yes. And so, in terms of connectivity, yes, as I've mentioned, we're having some challenges with that. Our team is working with at least one, it sounds like we may have another outside vendor also helping us to troubleshoot, and because the issues are not, as, as I understand them, and this is completely outside of my expertise, but as I understand them, the issues are not located in one place centrally, the team is having to fan out to understand where there are drops and interruptions throughout the district. So that's part of the, the challenge there. It's not a simple, this is broken in the centralized space, and so we fix that and we're, we're good. It's a bit more nuanced than that. But again, the team has been working even over, over weekends to do testing and, and that sort of thing to try various fixes. With regard to, I'm going to tee up either Dr. Quormack or either of the assistant supes to join us in sharing any additional information about quarantining instruction while they prepare for that. We, I am excited to share that this past week now, with the caveat of, we had the one day of district closure from the storm, and Thursday and Friday, the launch of our virtual instruction, we saw fewer cases last week than we have in the three weeks prior.
Okay.
And I believe for scholars, remind me if I'm, if I'm, if I have this correct, I believe 23? 21. 21 scholar cases last week as compared to 50 or so the last two weeks? And then, I don't want to give you the wrong number for the first week, but, but so fewer cases last week, about half, less than half cases last week. And what was the number for staff?
Cases last week?
Six cases for staff this past week. And so, very pleased that we saw fewer cases, again, with those caveats, but if, if that continues, then I feel good about that. We have three confirmed outbreaks since we've been in school. Three. All of them in elementaries. And, and by the way, we're seeing, and, and, you know, this could be just by virtue of the, the numbers of, of elementary schools versus middles and highs, but we're seeing more of our cases in the elementary schools. And so, again, more reason for us to offer the virtual and, and excitement for folks to take us up on the virtual option there. But the numbers, at least as we saw last week with a slight decline in numbers, that makes me hopeful that we're continuing to manage with all of the, the protocols that we have in place and with the continued attention there. Our team, I should also share this, our team, and we'll come back with more specifics on this soon, I believe perhaps at the next board meeting, but our team is working on a, and a strategy to help us to understand our consistency around the use of our protocols, because we've heard, you know, a case here or there, or a situation here or there where perhaps, you know, a, a protocol was not observed by a parent or a community member. And so, we take all of that feedback to heart, we're watching, we're ensuring that, you know, everyone remains diligent. It's a lot of work, a lot to manage, but I am excited that as we're all fanning out the various district support team members fanning out into our, our schools, I am encouraged by what we're seeing on the whole. So just to kind of add to the actual numbers that we're seeing, the, all of the work that folks are doing just to ensure that we're as safe as possible. Does someone, could someone join to share any feedback on exactly how we're supporting scholars who are quarantining?
There are two categories of students that we look to support during quarantine. So the first category would be those students that are quarantining, and that's a school imposed quarantine because of a close contact at school. They have access to Zoom link or to the Google Classroom link so that they can join classroom, their classroom, progress and continue to maintain their schedule. Probably another important category of students who need to quarantine are those that are under self-imposed quarantine based on an incident outside of school. And so it becomes really imperative for parents and families to communicate that information with the school, because absent that, that's treated as an absence. So if parents will provide documentation of the need to engage in a medical quarantine, they can also receive the link, but that documentation is very important so that the safeguards against, you know, bringing those students back into the building and ensuring the, the continuity of instruction can continue, but that we have the medical supports to, you know, to shore that up.
Okay. And, and so, in an instance where there's a school imposed quarantine, effectively the teacher is in a hybrid situation and it's synchronous learning, is that's what's taking place?
Yeah. Unfortunately, we're not able to guard against simulcasting in that occasion. With our virtual planning, we have been able to ensure that there is not simulcasts in, in need where teachers are both presenting to in-person and virtual scholars. In the case of a short-term quarantine, however, teachers are simulcasting to ensure that students can continue to have first access to the content information and then can continue to complete assignments virtually.
Okay. And so in that instance, that the teachers are notified if they have a student in a quarantine, and then they take measures to, to engage in the, the simulcasting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you.
There are no other questions, board members? And again, appreciate your time and attention this evening. I'll turn the meeting back over to you, President Sieg.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Do we have any participants for a public comment, Ms. Williams? Okay, we do not. Community members who would like to make public comments should email their requests to Ms. Rosalyn Williams at roswilliams, R-O-S-W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S, at jackson.k12.ms.us, no later than 4:00 PM. Next, we have information-only items, and the first update will be the bond update, and I believe Ms. Robinson and Ms. Franklin will be here to present.
Good evening, Dr. Sieg, Dr. Green. Can you hear me? Okay. We have the pleasure at each of the first board meetings to, to provide the update on the bond project. And in tonight's presentation, we will give the construction update, followed by projected board action dates and the bond financial report update. Ms. Franklin will lead us with the construction update.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Green, President Sieg. Tonight, we'll start our updates looking at some of our Phase II and III sites, in particular the elementary schools. At Boyd Elementary School, we have one set of restrooms under renovation. You can see in the photo on the left, those were the previous restrooms. Over the summer, the plumbing inside the walls have been updated. New structural carriers for the fixtures have installed, the epoxy floors have been installed as well as the tile. Now we're just waiting on all of the plumbing fixtures, the new lighting, partitions and accessories. At Marshall Elementary School, we have two sets of courtyard restrooms under renovation as well as a staff restroom. Here, all of the fixtures, epoxy floors have been installed, but we're having some delays with our solid, solid plastic partitions. So here we see the temporary wooden partitions, and we're having that same issue at Oak Forest Elementary School. Partitions here have been delayed also. We have two sets of restrooms under renovation here. One set has all of the fixtures installed and lighting, but we're still waiting on a couple of other things. Here, we're waiting on the ceilings, the flooring, as well as our solid plastic partitions. At Oak Forest, we have a couple of other things going on also, and all of the, throughout all of the quarters, all of that flooring has been updated to VCT. In the next slide, we'll see a drainage project that's going on at Oak Forest Elementary School. Throughout the years, we've had an issue here with standing water in that courtyard. All of the runoff from the buildings would just hold there, it would not drain properly. So with this project, we're connecting ADS drainage piping to all of the roof drains and carrying that water away so that this courtyard will, might stay dry and it will be a usable area. At Smith Elementary School, we have a set of restrooms there under renovation. We can see on the far left what the restrooms looked like previously. In the other photos, we see the progress. All of the old fixtures have been removed, we've gone into the walls, replaced the structural carriers, updated the plumbing, and now the epoxy floors have been installed as well as the tile. And next, we're waiting on all of the fixtures, the partitions and the new lighting and all of the accessories. Next, at Walton Elementary School, we have a set of restrooms here under renovation. On the far left, we see what the restrooms looked like previously. Since this time, since taking this photo, they've been demolished, and they're still in progress, but we have gone into the walls and updated all of the structural carriers, updated the old decaying pipes, and we're in the middle of tiling. They'll receive epoxy floors, new plumbing fixtures, new lighting, partitions and all new accessories. Next, we will move to some of our middle schools. At Bailey Middle School, we have a structural repair and drainage project in progress. The photo on the left, we see that heavy mechanical unit that was on the south end of the building, and it's caused some structural damage over the years. That unit has been removed, removed from the top of the building, and it'll be placed on a concrete slab, sitting along to itself. In the next photo, we'll see some of the structural work going on, on the inside. We are lifting some piers in the crawl space and repairing some of the cracks and damage to the foundation that's happened over the years. Next, at Northwest Middle School, you may remember this photo, we looked at it back in June. This was a project that we rushed a contractor to, to finish over the summer. All of the carpet was ripped out in June, and on August 8th, the day before school started, they had all of the classrooms completed. And in the next photo, we'll see the other spaces that they've finished since then. They finished all of the quarters, the library and the lobby have all received new vinyl At Callaway High School, our library is still under renovation there. The photo on the left, we have seen it before, we looked at it back in March, I think, that was a solid wall, and it was removed completely. On the right, we see the new aluminum and glass storefront, and it allows us visibility into the library. We see all new flooring, the lights, the new lights have been installed as well as the new circular, circulation desk. In the next photo, we'll see some other photos of that progress. Okay, at Winfield High School, that library is also still under renovation. On the left, we, this was a demo photo of that library. On the right, we see the new flooring has gone in. That circulation desk, it just got updated with a new soffit above it and painted. In the next photo, in the next slide, you'll see two more photos of Winfield's library with the new lights and flooring, and the photo on the right shows their new glass and aluminum storefront. Next, at Forest Hill High School, we have had several projects at this school. In the Coliseum, we've got an all-new maple flooring, the floors have been re-leveled. That was one of our MDE corrective action plan items, as well as adding air conditioning to this gym. So we've received, received new HVAC units, the floors have been leveled, a new scoreboard and all new seating throughout the Coliseum. That's just another wide shot of it. Also at Forest Hill, at the field there, our press box and ticket booth are being updated. On the left, we see the press box. It has three new rooms for officials to sit and make announcements throughout the game before they were not air-conditioned. Current, now they are. And we also took out the wood, the exterior finishes of the building that were decaying over time, and we replaced them with brick and aluminum. The photo on the right is the ticket booth, which now is larger, and it's also clad in brick and aluminum. And it's all, the field out there has also gotten some additional sidewalks fencing, new handrails on this grand, grandstand seating. At Linear High School, this is our facade improvements project. We see here the stoop at the front of the school has doubled in size, and it will also receive a new ADA ramp. The front of the building has been pressure washed and painted. It will receive all new doors with this project also, as well as new signage on the front of the building. I think that concludes all of our construction updates. Next, Ms. Robinson will walk us through our projected action timeline as well as our financials.
Okay, you can see the excitement of those pictures for those projects, so we're excited about that. For the projected board action timeline, we have a few more projects that we are slated to come to the board for approval. In October, we plan to come with the Wales A-PAC and McLeod renovation projects. We did rebid both projects and had to modify the scope a bit, a bit, in order to get, get them within the budgets, the allocated budgets. And then in November, we do project to come to the board for approval for the renewal field renovations, as well as drainage and utility improvements at various schools. Those schools are Isible, McWilly, Cardoza and Kirksey, all have exterior work projects. And for, for the most part, they will complete the majority of, all of our schools that will have come to the board for bid approval at that point. This slide shows the, our graphics for our fund balance, excuse me, the amount we've expended so far on the bond. So in the orange, it shows the amount expended, and we're over 32% expended now, $32 million expended, and that's about 45%. Part showed in gray is the amount encumbered, and that is over 37% expended in the encumbered now. And that's 26.4 million. And to date, we have encumbered or expended over 84%. So we're about 16 point, 16% left to be encumbered, and that's over $11 million. The next three slides give a school-by-school balance as far as the budget, the expenditures, the encumbered and the budget balances. And I won't read that slide to you, just the next slide will be any questions. So we are excited about all of the projects that we have, and we welcome any, any questions from the board.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Board members, are there any questions for Ms. Robinson or Ms. Franklin for the, the bond?
This is great. It's great to see we've only got $11 million left, and I know Newfield was a big one. And so, the only other item that I would ask about is the baseball fields, just to get an update on the status of those, because I think what I heard you say was after we approve those drainage projects, that will be all of the schools? Is that correct?
For the schools, yes.
Okay.
But not the, it does not include the baseball complex updates. So we will provide, provide a more detailed update pending on the baseball status.
Great. We look forward to it.
Okay. We're going to coach as far as coming up with the final plan, so we are in work with athletics as far as what that will be.
Great.
You want to say a little more on just some of the considerations, even?
You, you want to say a little more on just some of the considerations even now in the planning, financing, et cetera?
Right. So, uh, actually we have over almost three million dollars that was, um, additional interest. Um, we work with our interim CFO. We've identified that money. That will be, um, be able to support, um, both, um, the remaining projects, which includes Newell Field and the baseball complex. We are, um, of course at the, at Hardy, which is our athletics complex. We are doing those upgrades at Hughes and, um, also at Hardy, the school. And we're, um, looking at that being the location for, um, the baseball, um, improvements as well. But we also, um, uh, in, in discussions with, um, Coach Jones came up with some ideas of how we can improve baseball at the high schools as well. Because one of the things that, uh, we learned that we don't have is adequate practicing. So we can have a field to play, but if we don't have that adequate practice, uh, facilities or, um, you know, similar turf, uh, it, it doesn't lend itself well to, to grow baseball as we want to do within the district. So we have more options for students, um, to, um, be able to participate. So we're looking at, um, improvements at both at some of the school locations and, and targeting, um, Hardy as that location. Where we will be able to provide, um, you know, baseball upgrades and, as well as softball, because we want to have our ladies taken care of as well.
Just going to ask you to also speak to, um, some of the pending concerns around, uh, renewal and costs and how all of that is kind of playing out together.
Uh, correct. So right now, of course Hughes, um, we came to the board. That was over six million dollars. So, uh, we had only projected it was going to be four point five million dollars, but it did come in, um, above, um, estimates. But we did have, um, some wiggle room in some of our, um, other projects, say the science labs. We didn't spend as much money with that. Um, so we are, um, looking at Hughes Field to be a projected seven million dollars. Um, and that includes, um, you know, redoing the turf, um, adding, um, practice lanes for our track there. We do have to do some structural improvement, of course, because there was problems at that field that, you know, while we had to close it. And we are doing new restroom facilities as well as concession stands. So it's, uh, it will be, um, real intensive improvement. But we are going to look at some things that we may have to face and scale later on in case, um, and, and issuing alternates to make sure what's in the base bid is awardable. But then we can build out and then, um, improve that stadium, stadium over time in case we can't do everything in the initial, um, base bid.
And, and for Newell, uh, as we continue to work with our planners, our architects and with the, um, historic?
Yes, arches and history does have to do a review and approve, um, because it is a historical site. Um, they, they do want us to, um, keep particular features in place.
Yeah, which obviously come at a cost. And so as we continue to deal with all of those details, that is kind of impacting where we go and how, how, how much we'll be able to accomplish even with the, uh, additional revenue from the bond dollars.
So, um, initially we had allocated one million dollars for the baseball improvement. We do see that it will cost more and that's why we're, we're seeing where Newell Field will come and then the additional, uh, revenue. And then seeing where, um, um, you know, we can make the best, uh, decisions as far as, um, not, um, what projects we have completed, making sure that we can close those out and move those funds to, um, Newell Field and the baseball field.
Okay. Now that's all really helpful. I'm, I'm actually really excited about seeing additional space throughout the district for baseball. Um, I'd even love to see it down at the middle school level, but I'm not, beggars aren't going to be choosy on that. Um, again, it just, it's great to hear that it's, um, again, going to be out there. Not just baseball, but you made the great point of softball as well. So thank you for reminding us there. Any other questions, board members? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Thank you, Ms. Franklin.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay, next we have the review of the English Learners District Plan. Dr. Strong.
Good evening. Dr. Sebag, board members, Dr. Green. The administration recommends approval of the English Learners District Plan. Every school district in Mississippi must develop and implement a comprehensive EL district. Title III of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, as amended by the Every Student Succeeds Act, requires districts to report on a variety of key EL-related measures that can be used to improve local and state programs for English learners. Each school district, this of the EL population, or Title III funding eligibility, must update its plan annually and have it board approved. Tonight we do have Ms. Tiffany Fuller, our EL director, here with us if we have any additional questions.
Thank you. Before we proceed, I'm getting feedback from board members that they cannot hear. We lost them? Do we, do we need to? Several members need to call back in? We apologize to our, uh, community members who are watching. Uh, thank you for your patience as we, uh, get our technology back online. Okay, do we have all, all board members back on? Okay. Um, can I just get clarification? Board members, can you hear what's, take the conversation in the boardroom?
They say yes.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Um, Dr. Strong, do you mind, uh, presenting the materials again?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
The administration recommends approval of the English Learners District Plan. Every school district in Mississippi must develop and implement a comprehensive EL district plan. Title III of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, as amended by Every Student Succeeds Act, requires districts to report on a variety of key EL-related measures that can be used to improve local or state programs for English learners. Each school district, regardless of the EL population size or Title III funding eligibility, must update its plan annually and have it board approved.
Thank you, Dr. Strong. And I think you mentioned before you have a colleague here as well?
Yes, Ms. Tiffany Fuller. She's our director of EL. She's here with us this, this evening.
Great, thank you. Board members, do you have any questions for Dr. Strong? Uh, Dr. Strong, I have a few questions that I, I would like, uh, to just run by. Um, first, I was just wondering if you could just describe how the plan is operationalized? Um, you know, what looks different in a school that's designated for our ELL, our English language learners, um, from say a school that, that is not designated for them?
Okay, we're going to allow Ms. Fuller to come up.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, your question was, can you repeat your question?
Yes, Ms. Fuller. Uh, the question was, um, how do we operationalize the plan, um, within our schools that are designated for English language learners? What looks different in a school that's designated for our ELL students relative to a school that is not?
Okay. Um, well, for JPAS, we have eight ESL sites. These sites are identified by an ESL teacher, um, which would not, which would not be present on a non-EL site. Um, the teacher is certified, um, and is been instructed with different instructional strategies that are necessary in order to promote language development, um, among our EL students. Uh, there is a language service plan that is developed for each one of our EL students. That is what is the same on both of the sites. Every student will have a language service plan and be identified with accommodations in order to support them. Um, however, when you are on a non-ESL program site, there is not a certified ESL teacher, uh, present.
Okay, that's very helpful. And are there, are there any major changes in this plan relative to the plan we approved last year?
There are not.
Okay. And about how many English language learners do we have, um, a year enrolled in our district?
We currently have about four hundred and twenty-eight students this year. Um, and in comparison to last year, it's about the same, give or take maybe about ten students. Um, we did have a, a small decrease from the prior two years, but from this year and last year, they are about the same.
Are there things we could do to increase the number of English language learners that we attract to the district?
Uh, probably, the only thing that I think that we could grow in is probably introducing a bilingual program. Um, and we currently offer just an ESL program, but if we would explore a bilingual program, that probably would increase our EL population.
What, what is a bilingual program?
So with a bilingual program, you would actually have instruction in Spanish. Um, research says that, uh, when your, your primary language is stronger, um, especially in elementary years, then it is easier to take on that second, second language acquisition.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to support that, um, uh, that notion or that, that thought that the ESL bilingual ed program, could attract more scholars, it also would align to, um, the option for scholars to graduate eventually with the seal of bilinguacy, which is something that, you know, we're, we're really just now starting to talk and promote and, um, and, and push. And so, uh, as we think about kind of how we develop scholars earlier on for greater success as they move forward in our schools, that's, that's an option, yeah?
It's an, it's exciting to think about, you know, as, as, you know, we look at ways to grow the district. I think that's, that's, you know, having, uh, uh, programs, and I had not ever heard of that before, but it sounds very interesting. Um, but if it's a way to attract more scholars, particularly as our Latinx population grows in the metro area, it's, it sounds like a great opportunity.
Well, as we continue to, uh, explore various ways to open our scholars up to the world, um, and, you know, it's great that we offer some foreign language instruction, but as we think about it as a pathway to bilinguacy, as a pathway to, um, even eventually some, um, greater bicultural, um, multicultural experiences and, and understandings. Those are ways to build towards that. And it's, you know, these are programs that you just don't see in a lot of places. And so, um, whether it's for Latinx, um, population to grow that population or just others, other scholars and families who want something that's, um, that's different and really compelling for college, uh, applications, for jobs, you name it, on and on, just all the benefits of that. Stuff to do is something that I'd be, um, very much so interested in exploring for our scholars in, in our district. You know, as we continue to build out some of the other plans that we have in place right now. Um, having a broader range of experiences for scholars benefits all.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have a review of the workers' compensation insurance policy. Attorney Moore.
Good evening. President Sebag, Dr. Green, board members. The Office of the General Counsel is, um, presenting for information only, um, recommendation that the South Group, the Evans Insurance Agency and Bitco Insurance Company continue to provide a workers' compensation insurance policy for the district. The South Group, the Evans Insurance Agency and Bitco Insurance Company partnered with the district starting the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year to provide workers' compensation insurance for employees injured on the job. The insurance policy referenced is a guaranteed cost insurance policy and is, does not require a per claim deductible. Um, also our premium for this year decreased from the previous year. In twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, our premium was two million eighty-seven thousand dollars, four hundred sixty-four dollars. In twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one year, the premium was, went down to two million fifty-four thousand dollars, six, six hundred fifty-six. And for this upcoming year, the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two year, the premium has went down to one million nine hundred two thousand, one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And those decreases in the premium are, uh, are because of a number of factors. For one, we are experiencing a reduction in the severity of our claims. We, um, some of which is due to the employees and students not being physically present due to COVID. Okay, also the carrier, which is Bitco, has acknowledged the work that the internal and external risk management teams are doing. Um, they are active and willing carrier partner, so they're noticing the work that we're doing to minimize our risk. Um, our team works with the carrier to review claims on a regular basis. And also the lag time in reporting has dramatically decreased, which is, which results in the lessened severity of our claims. In twenty nineteen, the average days for an incident reported to the carrier was twenty-five point four days. In twenty twenty, that number decreased to twenty-two point one days. And in twenty twenty-one, with our MedCor service that I will talk about in just a moment, that went down to eight point nine days in reporting time. We still have work to do. Um, best practices on reporting claims are between three and four days, but we're moving forward in the right direction. Next, the Office of the General Counsel and Risk Management recommends that the board review the amendment of the memorandum of understanding between BXS Insurance for MedCor, which is our nurse triage service, um, and the Jackson Public School District. Um, that is a service that we use for reporting our workers' compensation claims. Um, at the November fifth, twenty twenty, um, board meeting, the board approved the execution of the memorandum of understanding. Um, and the agreement was set to commence on or about November sixth, twenty twenty, and continue through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. However, the district did not start receiving services under the agreement until February the first. So in order for us to see the full benefit of our services and the discounted price that we have, um, the agreement needs to be extended, um, until, um, the end of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. the agreement needs to be extended into the end of January 31, 2022.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Moore. Board members, are there any questions for Attorney Moore? Okay, I just have one, Attorney Moore. Thank you for the update. I actually did not connect the dots to your presentation that the MedCor contract was to assist with bringing the reporting days down. Is that a correct interpretation?
Yes, it does that, but MedCor is the reporting services that we use. So usually, the employees will have to call the district directly, our Risk Management Department, to report their claims and then be referred out for triage services. Now, they can call MedCor. It's available 24 hours a day, so it helps with them immediately being able to report their injury. So they report it to MedCor and then MedCor refers them out to whichever treatment facilities that they need to.
Okay. And did I hear it right? The days to claim ran from 22 to 18? Is that correct?
The days for reporting claims in 2020 went from 2.1 to 2021 to 8.9 days.
Oh, 8.9?
Yes.
Okay, that's a huge reduction. And that was one of the risk management factors that contributed to a reduction in our workers' compensation?
In our premium, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you. That's all very helpful. And I appreciate you getting this to us for information-only to absorb. It's, I know a lot of work has been done to get this to that place. I just wanted to acknowledge that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we will have Ms. Marshall Thomas, who will share with information on an agreement with the Jackson Convention Complex and also approval of an MOU, or a review of an MOU between Education Equity Lab for dual enrollment in Jackson Public Schools.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Board members, Dr. Seback and Dr. Green. I'm Colonel Brown, the Director of JRTC. Recommended action: Jackson Public Schools junior ROTC plan to conduct the annual Consolidated Military Ball in the Jackson Convention Complex on Friday, December 17, 2021. The license agreement for this event is presented for your approval. The rationale justification: Conducting an annual military ball is a requirement for the JRTC curriculum. During the past years, each school conducted separate military balls at various locations throughout the city of Jackson. We have decided instead of having seven separate military balls, we will conduct a JPS JRTC gala with cadets from all JPS high schools coming in together as one. We expect approximately 800 attendees at this grand event. Average attendance over the past eight years has been 915 students. This year, this is going to be a very dignified and highly enjoyable event for all attendees. The total Jackson Convention Complex cost for this event is $22,265.
Thank you, Colonel Brown. I apologize. I did not realize until right now that you were making the presentation. Board members, are there any questions of Colonel Brown? Colonel Brown, I do have a few questions. So I do question being 800 people together for a gala in the middle of a pandemic with the Delta variant. I know we bring students to school every day.
Yes, sir.
So what protocols will we have? First of all, should we be doing it? That's, you know, I heard all the, I understand it's a part of the training and all of that. You know, is there any CDC guidance that is out there on bringing this many people to an inside event?
Sir, I would like to tell you that there's risks in everything that we do, for the CDC guidelines. The students will be inside of the convention center. All the tables will be six feet apart. There will only be five students per table. All students will wear their protective mask. The only time they will not wear protective masks is when they are taking a photo shot or when they're eating their food. The event, like I said, will start at 6:00 and will end at 12:00. The ceremony, we will not have a receiving line. There will be no contact with hands or anything in the receiving line. That reduced the timeline for the overall event. We're asking that those students who have had vaccinated shots, please attend. Those students that have not had the vaccinated shot, we're requesting that those students, 72 hours before the event starts on the 17th of December, that they will provide us with a negative test result so that that way we're near 10. That we will see that those students are negative, so we have no impact on the other students. All the students who will be tested will have a temperature check coming into each of the checkpoints coming in to the convention center. So there will, like I said, there's risks involved, but we believe that our scholars deserve to have this moment to celebrate and celebrate all their significant activities over the school year from last year and this year, since we didn't have a military ball last year. And so we'll stand strong to make sure that all of our instructors are there and chaperones are there to ensure that our students wear the proper mask during the event, during the actual ceremony. So that's why we feel that we should move forward and continue to have our military gala.
Dr. Seback and Board members are at two points, kind of in addition to what Colonel Brown has already shared. We do anticipate our basketball season coming up. And we will have indoor, or our plan at least right now is to have participants, onlookers, in the gymnasiums as we play our basketball games. So in keeping with that, and frankly, pretty soon, we will be looking at end-of-year senior events. Again, there's a lot of time between now and then, and who knows what the data will show in cases and all of that. But we see these as consistent with those activities and want to be at least as even-handed with our activities related to our JROTC scholars as we will with our seniors, with those who might want to participate in our basketball games and some of the other events in private.
And problems as well in the spring.
So what I'm hearing is effectively the same procedure we put in place for our scholar, which is what we're putting in place here. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, sir, and Board members.
Thank you.
And Dr. Seback, I also wanted to address your question about CDC guidance. According to the latest iteration, which was May 2021 and August from the Mississippi State Department of Health, they did not have any capacity for gatherings in any of those iterations.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Marshall Thomas.
You're welcome. Great evening, Dr. Seback, Board members, and Dr. Green. The administration recommends the approval of the Memorandum of Understanding between National Education Equity Lab and the Jackson Public School District for the 2021-2022 school year. The National Education Equity Lab is forging a new kind of relationship between colleges and high schools rooted in their belief that while talent is evenly distributed, opportunity is not. The Ed Equity Lab empowers colleges to take a more active role in developing and inspiring the next generation of leaders. In partnership with pioneering universities, including Yale, Howard, Cornell, Arizona, UConn, Arizona State University, University of Pennsylvania Wharton School, UC Davis, and Stanford University, to name a few, they will provide online college-bearing credit courses, teacher-led high school classrooms across our district. By enabling high school students from historically underserved communities to take actual college courses from college professors, students can build the skills and confidence needed to apply and thrive in college. Participating students earn widely transferable college credits at no cost to them and have access to mentorship and hands-on support. National Equity Lab contributes to our goals by increasing academic achievement and performance. Students earn three credit hours at the college level, while the college transcript is a permanent college record. Sound research suggests that academic and career-focused dual-credit and dual-enrollment programs in which high school students take college courses for credit can benefit underachieving students and those underrepresented in higher ed. Studies find that students who participate in dual-credit and dual enrollment as part of their high school graduation pathway were more likely to graduate from high school, enroll in two- or four-year colleges, and complete their academic or career plan of study successfully. The majority of our scholars will begin taking their dual enrollment courses during the spring semester of 2022, but we have some high school scholars that were granted enrollment pending our request for approval tonight to start coursework on Monday, September 3rd.
All right. So Board members, any questions for Mrs. Marshall Thomas? Okay, so these are asynchronous, is that correct?
These are asynchronous online courses, yes, sir.
And they are treated as dual-credit, dual enrollment?
They're just dual enrollment courses.
Dual enrollment, okay.
Right, the courses that they are offering are their iconic courses, and they don't transition over to offer dual credit for us as well.
Okay. And are they, do they show up on, are they graded? Will the students receive a grade?
And they show up on their college transcripts. So for example, when our students graduate, they will have a high school transcript from us, but then they also have a college transcript, for example, Arizona State or Howard or Yale that accompanies their high school transcript.
Okay. And is this going to do this next year?
Yes.
Okay.
We are so excited. We have a ton of students that are ready for the fall, I mean, for the spring semester. And the reason we wanted to wait the spring semester to offer it to more students is because our students are currently taking their dual-credit core courses, and we didn't want to replace those with these courses. So they can take their core courses this semester and then enroll and take their equity courses next semester.
Okay. And as far as the cost to the student?
No, no cost to the students. The district is up to the cost of $250 for registration fees.
Okay, that's great. Now, I did hear that it would be helpful to have approval tonight. Is that correct?
It would for our seven.
All right, it sounds like a great opportunity. And we have students who are banking on us to make sure they've got class to attend on Monday. So Board members, if there's any objection, I'll take a motion to approve this tonight. We will, thank you, that's a good point. We will need to amend the agenda to move this to an action item. So we'll take a motion to amend the agenda first. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Mr. President, I've moved it.
Yes, Ms. Hillier.
Hi, I have one comment.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to say that I think this is an excellent idea that Ms. Marshall has just presented. You know, I think that it speaks volumes for our district that we continue to look for avenues that prove that the students in the district are capable, very capable students, and they will meet the challenges that are before them. So I just wanted to congratulate you all on doing this, to help them accomplish this.
Thank you, Ms. Hillier. Just to reiterate, Ms. Hillier shared that, you know, this was an excellent idea and speaks volumes for the district to look forward and looks forward to this avenue that proves the students in our district is capable and will meet the challenges before us, particularly with this opportunity. So Ms. Hillier, is that a motion to amend the agenda to add this item to our information action items? Board members, are y'all able to hear me?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson. So we have a motion from Ms. Johnson to amend the agenda. And I think that was Ms. Thompson seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Now we need a motion to approve this action item.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Ms. Johnson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Marshall Thomas.
Thank you all.
And I believe you are up next. Pool of Partners.
The administration is recommending board approval for the Memorandum of Agreement between Jackson Public Schools and Catapult Learning LLC for the purpose of providing professional development and teacher and school leader coaching. Catapult will provide intensive professional learning with extended coaching and consulting to the teachers and administrators at the Henley Young Youth Court School and Capital City Alternative School. Catapult is rooted in their experience operating schools with vulnerable student populations. The vast majority of their K-12 students come to them with a long history of serious behavioral infractions, students with a propensity to drop out, students that are chronically truant, or students that have been expelled from school and require an acute behavioral and academic intervention to be successful. Each year, they train over 1,000 faculty and staff members on their research-based approach to school culture, an immersive SEL model, and an academic support model. The other core components, assessments and coaching, are custom-designed to meet the unique climate and culture needs and goals of both schools. Catapult will provide a cohort-based professional learning experience that supports staff members across various roles in both schools.
Thank you. And so the request on this is to amend the agreement with the Pool of Partners to Catapult. And I also believe there were some changes to the other schools that were named in the Pool of Partners.
Yes, so Catapult was not in the original Pool of Partners, so we'll bring it as a separate entity, and Dr. Merritt will speak on the change.
Okay, so and just to be clear, the addition of Catapult doesn't affect the funding?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir.
Thank you. Was any other questions on the addition of Catapult for services at Henley Young and Capital City? Okay, thank you, Mrs. Marshall Thomas.
Are you planning to take these as a pool?
Yes, we'll do that. We'll take all these, yeah, we'll vote at the end as a pool. And Ms. Dr. Merritt, so I think just one other quick point. I think I can cover this, Dr. Merritt, and if I don't, then come on up. There was basically, just some slight administrative change on the Bailey Education Group contract. We approved this on August 3rd. Wilkins Elementary was inadvertently omitted from the contract, so we've got to add them in to get 15 days of support. Additionally, the administrator at McLeod Elementary has requested 22 days of ELA support. So those days will come from the reallocation from 110 to 88. And lastly, support will be added for Com Park, Span, and Sykes. And really, there was a question of whether or not we need to bring this, but just in terms of being in compliance, being above board, we just wanted to make sure that we had action approving that, those changes. So I'm betting that you provided me with that information, so thank you, Dr. Merritt. Okay. All right, so with that, we'll bring up Dr. Thomas to discuss the Heinz Behavioral Health Services agreement.
Good evening, President Seback, Board members, Dr. Green. President Sebag, board members, Dr. Green. The administration presents to you for approval of information action item, the memorandum of agreement between the Jackson Public School District and Heinz Behavioral Health Services. The purpose of this agreement is to continue the established and guided working relationship between Heinz Behavioral Health Services and Jackson Public School District. Heinz Behavioral Health Services provides therapeutic services to children in Heinz County ages 3 to 18 with emotional and behavioral problems. Many of the services are provided at the child's school, at home, and at the HBS Center or in the community. Heinz Behavioral Health Services will provide services at Henley Young Detention Center and to all elementary schools. These therapeutic services are a part of the continuum of services provided by Heinz Behavioral Health Services to meet the mental health and wellness needs of the residents of Heinz County.
One question. Dr. Thomas, board members, any questions on the agreement with Heinz Behavioral Health Dr. Thomas, I did have a question. I know you shared with us a survey, a satisfaction survey specifically in reference to how parents receive, perceive the services. Could you just share highlights from that survey?
So, yes, basically, there was a survey that shared various, and one in particular one that you asked about was parent satisfaction. So, overwhelmingly, basically, about 94% of the respondents provided positive ratings for their services for Heinz Behavioral Services, and some of these comments were about being overall satisfied with the services that the child received, the people that helped their child, and stuck with them no matter what. So, as we are aware, many of the case managers and consultants that the students have, they have for many years, and so they continue to help and manage the families. Also, the services that the child or family received were just right and dedicated for whatever problems that those particular families or children had. So, there was an overwhelming of 94% of the respondents being satisfied with the services.
And did you have a sense of what the response rate was on those surveys?
Um, roughly about, well, when I looked at the surveys, they had serviced about 23, 2400 families. So, I'm not really certain of the total number there of surveys that they got back, but I think it was roughly about 60 to 70% of those that they received back.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
And we mentioned, basically, with joyful learning environments, that basically, when students can receive these services on-site, it does assist us with their attendance, and so with the elementary schools, we did see attendance rates of roughly 90%. So, that does help when they do not have to leave school to receive these services or have those doctor appointments.
Okay, that's a good point, too.
Okay.
Okay, could you, would you move on to the agreement between Maverick Health, Jackson Public School District?
Certainly. We do ask for approval of a MOU with Maverick Health and Jackson Public School District. Purpose of this agreement is to establish a guided working relationship between Maverick Health and Jackson Public School District. Mississippi Department of Health has contracted with Maverick Health as the laboratory to offer voluntary school-based COVID-19 screening, testing for unvaccinated students and staff. Maverick Health will administer or perform the test to students based on parental consent. The purpose of this program is to provide an additional layer of prevention to slow the spread of COVID-19 in the school settings and in extracurricular activities.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Are there any questions from the board? I just had one. Is the, is this one of the vendors that will be used to test student athletes?
Yes, sir. This is the one and only vendor that is approved by Mississippi Department of Health, and is a large vendor. We've been working with them, and we really seek your approval so that we can start them with testing the student athletes as well as staff and additional students that may be unvaccinated.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we will have Mrs. Purnell to share update on the various activity funds, budgets, and the monthly financial report. Good evening.
To Dr. Sebag, the board members, Superintendent Dr. Green, my colleagues, JPS team members. The administration is recommending the approval of the activity fund budgets and two other various budgets that we're asking for fiscal year 2021 to 2022. The activity fund budgets range from funds 1150 to 1276, which is approximately about 114 budgets, which amounts to $931,413.14. As you all know, may not know, the activity funds are cash-based funds that the district do have for our students, and they are used for various purposes. The budgets are being presented to increase academic performance and achievement by supporting the various activities of our students. These budgets also will benefit our students by allowing the administration to expend those dollars that have been recorded over several years. This is money that has been in the budgets for several, year after year, we'll put it that way. Also, we are asking for the approval of two other budgets besides the 114 of activity funds. One is Project Ignite, that's going to be on Fund 2311, approximately for the first year, some $149,511.41. The purpose of this budget, this grant, is to create a cross-state networked improvement community, including job-related professional development, leadership academics, instructional leadership, team human capital management system, instructional coaching, and differentiated compensation. These funds will be used to provide compensation as well as professional development for the personnel associated with this grant. This is also a grant that Dr. Kimberly Smith, I think, really implemented and had a great impact upon. These funds were donated, are donated to the district from, not donated, sorry, these funds are actually federal funds that we are receiving through Project Ignite. The next budget that we are asking for approval of is the special grants of 1930. That grant is $137,271.67. These are funds that have been donated to the district for various purposes and to different schools to implement and support academic, professional, and a student achievement on those. So, we get those from very, very different areas, student from the student and from administration as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Purnell. And there, board members, are there any questions about the information that's been Okay, thank you. Next, we will have Dr. Moss, who will provide us with updates on after-school programs as well as an agreement.
I have one more.
Oh, there's one more?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, the monthly financial report, sorry about that, thank you.
Administration is recommending the approval from the board for the monthly financial report for the month ending July 31st, 2021. The monthly financial reports contains the statement of fund balance, the budget status report, the bank reconciliation report, and the district cash flow report. There's just a few highlights, I think that you all probably have them in your report already. The statement of fund balance with the district maintenance, our preliminary fund balance as of July 31st was $10,294,260.92, which is pretty much consistent with previous years, it's been unotted. Hopefully, in the next board meeting or next one coming up, we'll be able to give you our standing of where we ended up as of June 30th, and then July 1, July 30th will also increase and be a different amount. Also, the child nutrition, which is our 2110, continues to have a significant fund balance, which always could support our nutrition where our cafeterias are associated. S-serve funds, those funds always have a negative balance along with a few other of our federal programs because of the drawdowns, which always happens on the 12th of each month that we have to do to the Department of Education. On the budget status report, our fund balance, I mean, our fund 1120 shows that we've actually collected about 3.7% of the revenue currently as of July, and we've expended about 4.3% of expenditures of the budget at this particular time, which is kind of consistent with last year's, maybe a little slightly over. The bank reconciliation report is coming from June 30th of 2021, which represented that at that time. Also, as of June 30th, we did have one account that was still with Priority 1, which is our Southern administrators' account, which dealt with, we had to leave it open due to the fact that we had outstanding checks had to come through, even though we had actually moved the funds to a Trustmark account, but those were still there in order to let that account close out. We had one other fund, I think it was at Bankrupt South, which is our TORT account, and it was only there because of an investment, but the count, we actually moved those funds also to a Trustmark account as well, but due to the fact that there were investments in there, they could not close it until they actually liquidated those funds in order to give the district a check, and then those funds were actually deposited into our Trustmark account, and that account was officially closed, and that was also done in the month of July of 2021. Our cash flow report, Ameri shows that any cash rebalance as of July 31st of $13,388.06, compared to last year, we had $11,938,825.15 in July of 2020. We have slightly, expenses are a little higher. This year, they are like $4,758,70.23 as compared to $3,794,254.73 in July of 2020. And of course, this is mostly due to the salary increases that the district did implement for this fiscal year. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Purnell. Board members, any questions on the financial report? Ms. Purnell, I just had one question, specifically in reference to the bank accounts. If memory serves me correct, that was the need to consolidate those accounts in one bank is a finding from an audit, is that correct?
That is correct.
And, and so, have they all been closed now?
They have been as of July.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, real quick, which audit was it that that was in response to?
That was actually our external audit, and also, I'm sure it's going to be some of the findings on the offices of State Auditor's office as well, but it was really brought to our attention from our external, our external auditors we had with JD CPAs.
Okay, great, and my understanding is that we do have a variance committee meeting scheduled for next Friday, is that right, Ms. Williams? The 17th, and at that meeting, we'll go over the findings from the Office of the State Auditor?
Yes.
Okay, we'll load those, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, now, we'll bring up Dr. Moss to share information about the after-school programs and the agreement with AmeriCor.
Good evening, President Sebag, board members, and Superintendent Green. The Jackson Public School District Administration recommends the approval of the selected agreements with vendors for after-school programs as outlined. A team of educators and stakeholders selected the programs to be able to provide educational enrichment, mentoring arts program, youth college readiness training, ACT prep, visual and performing arts, science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and health sciences, as well as foreign language. The selected after-school programs will provide the Jackson Public School District with after-school programming across all feeder patterns and school configurations, ensuring equitable access to high-quality out-of-school experiences and after-school programming. We believe to prepare scholars to achieve globally, contribute locally, and be fulfilled individually, after-school programming is critical. We believe in a dual commitment to both JPS scholars and their parents and guardians. As such, we believe supporting working parents and guardians by providing a safe nurturing after-school program is mission critical. We believe we must give scholars a world-class learning experience to attain an exceptional knowledge-based, critical, relevant skill sets and the necessary dispositions to be great both in and out of school. I just want to add here in this recommendation, much like Ms. Thomas, we have 3,487 students who are counting on us next Tuesday to launch after-school programming, as well as want to add to your point around Spanish programming, we have zero seats left in our Spanish programming. They were the first to leave, so that speaks to our parents' desire for that, but we ask for approval of this item.
Great, thank you, Dr. Moss. And why don't you go ahead and do, and present AmeriCor, and then we'll ask if there's any questions?
Absolutely. The Jackson Public School District Administration recommends the approval of the following project agreement with Reading and Math Incorporated Division of AmeriCor as outlined. AmeriCor is a national service program that engages people in a commitment to service and meeting needs in their local communities. Reading and Math Course Incorporated will provide the Jackson Public School District with 30 service members as reading and math tutors in selected elementary and middle schools through this agreement. Reading and Math Course will play a critical role in elementary and middle schools to accelerate learning post the COVID-19 pandemic. Specifically, these tutors will work with a student who struggled to meet the state requirements on the third-grade exam, and will support students preparing to take the third-grade exam during the 21, 22 school year. The tutors will be trained in evidence-based best practices and will provide additional support to increase reading and math performance. I just want to name that the schools were identified with our Office of Elementary Education and Middle Schools to be able to support this work. I want to also flag, this is a partnership that Dr. Green had at his previous district, and they were eager to come to Jackson and join us in this work.
Great, thank you, Dr. Moss. Board members, are there any questions about the after-school programs or the opportunity to expand our tutoring options through AmeriCor? I just had one, Dr. Moss, it's in reference to the AmeriCor opportunity. What's the recruitment plan for this support strategy for the reading and math?
Absolutely, great question. So, the district does not shoulder the responsibility of recruitment in this agreement. However, there's been overwhelming response. Over 100 individuals actually made an application to AmeriCor to serve in these respective positions. However, there are some spots that we're still looking to fill those individuals that not necessarily all meet the criterion to support students and to provide the level of instruction in which we desire. And so, there have been members of our leadership team and principals who've actively recruited folks to serve in the 30 positions that are available, but as part of this agreement, we don't shoulder or carry the burden of actually identifying the individuals for tutoring here.
And so, so how many do we have now?
So, pending approval of this agreement, September 27th, we have 20 who are ready to go, who've been trained in the science of both delivering reading and mathematics tutorial, with 10 others who are waiting to onboard, who've not completed the full process for being able to do it, but exactly 20 to start with us, September 27th, pending approval of this agreement.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Sebag, can I just add?
Yes.
One, a huge thanks to Dr. Moss and to the rest of the team for all of the, you cannot imagine many steps and pieces to the puzzle to try to put together a comprehensive district-wide after-school program to ensure high quality, consistency of experiences and high quality, and all of the communications and coordination with our operations team, with other academic leaders, of course, with the district, with the school-based leadership, on and on and on, all the pieces that have gone into lifting this up. So, I'm very, very pleased with the amount of work that has been done in a relatively short period of time to get us to this point, so just appreciate the questions that you asked, and just want to kind of pull the veil back a little bit at Oz for all of the magic that happens behind the curtain to get to this place. Lots of work coordinated by Dr. Moss, but inclusive of- Lots of work coordinated live by Dr. Moss, but inclusive of the entire team, and I'm just excited to get here today.
Great, thank you, Dr. Green, for sharing that. Certainly exciting, and a lot of local partners that are going to be involved as well, which is really, that's exciting as well. All right, next, I believe Dr. Cormac will present agreement between Quavir Music and JPS.
Good evening again to board members, Dr. Sebag, Dr. Green. The administration recommends the review of the Terms of Service and software with Quavir Music. Quavir Music is a comprehensive student standards-based music program that will be used to provide high-quality music instruction to our 3K through eighth-grade scholars. The district has not had a textbook adoption for elementary music in some time, nearly 14 years. We're excited that this process, the RFP process, was issued and reviewed by a community of music teachers in Jackson Public Schools who recommended this software program, several of whom have served as contributors and developers of the state's current music standards. So we urge your support this evening.
Great, thank you. And Dr. Cormac, well first, let me ask if there are any questions from board members? Hearing none, I appreciated the survey findings that were shared, that, which is, was, were included some data points around the effectiveness or the perceived satisfaction, not perceived satisfaction, the overall satisfaction with the program. Could you share some of the highlights from that information?
Sure, so, you know, our music educators, as I indicated before, we've not had a textbook adoption, and so the opportunity both to pilot and to utilize the resources to provide a more consistent experience for music education, I think, is really vital. I'd probably marry that with a greater finer arts conversation in the district. We've had a number of our educators who've been really excited about the opportunities to grow our fine arts programming to make certain that there's much more of a, kind of a conveyor belt and a pipeline of talent that we build in our elementary schools, and so this, they see as very much a part of that effort to make certain that students have access to high-quality experiences early on, such that when students want to compete in band later in high school or in other fine arts and visual arts offerings, that they've had an on-ramp to the ability to develop those skills in elementary and middle school.
No, thanks a lot, and over 90% engagement and alignment with MDE learning standards. Again, just, it was great to see the finding, and tell you what, I had an opportunity to go to the graduation classic this weekend and listen to the bands, and you know, if that's what we're building towards, it more power to, you know, that's exactly where we need to be.
Yeah, the lessons are highly engaging, and we actually see it take place. And as was mentioned, the educators that were tapped to be part of the review effort have participated in efforts by the Mississippi Department of Investigation to review the, and to contribute to the revision of music standards, and so that alignment and the ability to look at program offerings for alignment to standards is a direct reflection of the professional development that they've received.
Great, thank you. Okay, next, we will have Mr. Albright who will present the agreement between Duval Decker to provide a development plan for the Lake Haiko property at Jackson Public School District.
Good evening, President Sebag, Dr. Green, board members. The Jackson Public School District Administration has requested an approval of the award track as a result of a request for qualifications for performing the research and analysis to include community and organizational surveys to provide a development plan for the Lake Haiko property. Two forms were solicited for qualifications for this effort, and they were evaluated on the basis of their submissions using criteria of size and scope of previous efforts, methodology, inclusion of stakeholder groups, expertise of the team that would perform the planning effort, and cost. Duval Decker provided a more comprehensive approach and methodology at a lower cost, which was $145,000, not to exceed. One other item I'd like to bring to the board's attention, not relevant to this, but to the after-school program, that's also going to be our launch for the supper program. So child nutrition will be offering supper program initially to the after-school program, and then expand through the rest of our schools.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Albright. Board members, are there any questions for Mr. Albright on the Lake Haiko Duval Decker proposal? Okay, hearing none, I do have a few, Mr. Albright. In the executive summary, there's a reference to consulting services to be provided by SAHA Studio. I know this is Ms. Jocelyn Poe's business, and it looks like she will be a part of this effort. Could you describe how and the, how she will be a part of it and how she'll be compensated appropriately?
So I, because it's an agreement between Duval and Ms. Poe, I can't tell you specifically what her arrangement will be. I can tell you that she's provided advisory, excuse me, advisory services and consulting to Duval Decker on other planning projects, and I would assume that it'll be essentially the same type work for this planning effort. As a matter of fact, Duval Decker was excited that she was the other bidder in this and wanted to bring her onboard. Compensation will be through the normal cost of the contract, again, not to exceed $145,000. That will not be an additional cost to the district for her services.
Okay, and so it's your understanding that she will be a part of that based on what he has shared with you today?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then there's another option in here to add additional independent environmental testing, around $26,000. Is this, so is that rough, is that something that can be added to the existing scope if we needed to verify existing tests?
That's exactly what we're looking for. So if we are not satisfied with the results that we're receiving or the type of testing that energy is performing, the results that are being received after validation by MDEQ, then we can exercise this particular option, which would have third-party perform random sampling tests of soil or water and provide those results directly to us after validation by MDEQ.
Okay, and I do know that that was, that Mr. Figures brought up in an earlier meeting, is something that we should consider, and I was glad to see that in there because I do think independent testing is in our best interest. What is the, okay, so that's all the questions I have on the Lake Haiko. Before I move on, board members, are there any other questions about the Lake Haiko plan? Okay, hearing none, I also just wanted to, given all of our work around facilities and land, just wanted to check in on the status of the comprehensive land use study as well.
So up to this point, we have not released an RFQ. One of the reasons for the survey that was provided to the board was to determine whether or not there was either consensus or alignment around some basic strategy approaches, and we'll talk more about this in the working session, but there wasn't. And so to be able to provide any kind of specification or direction to a planner, we felt it was appropriate to try to gain alignment first, and so that's what we'll do at the board meeting or the working session on Friday, and then from there, move to the potential of a comprehensive study. I also have to let the board know that at this point, we don't have specific funding for a comprehensive study, and based on what the city of Jackson is paying for their master plan, I estimate that we're going to talk about $500,000 to $600,000 for that particular effort.
Okay, no, thank you, that's helpful to hear, and I look forward to the upcoming working session, and then also for reasons, that is actually the first I've heard of a potential figure put on it. But again, I think it's critical that we continue to keep that at the forefront of our discussion so that when we do make decisions around facilities and property, that they're guided by our best thinking and data and planning.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, next, we will move on to the Master Subscription Agreement Terms and Conditions from Identity Automation Information Technology Services, Ms. Erin Mason.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We recommend to the board to approve the Master Subscription Agreement Terms and Conditions for identity automation, to improve the services offered to our users, and improve the security of network accounts and network resources.
Thank you. Board members, are there any questions around this opportunity? Ms. Mason, I had one question. Could you just describe the capacities that this service adds to enhance our overall IT security?
One of the strongest options it provides for us is the ability to offer multi-factor to all of our users and not just our adult users, our younger users as well. And that's not something that we can do easily or at all with the current setup that we have. It allows our users to use multi-factor without having to use a personal cellphone device. And so that's really helpful, that encourages everybody to participate willingly instead of having to be forced to do that.
Okay, and could you just describe what multi-factor identification is?
Multi-factor identification is a way that when you log into a computer with your credentials, it forces the technology to ask you to verify who you are using a completely different technology. So the most common way that most people do with their banks is a cellphone. You get a cellphone number, you get a text, and it says, hey, you're trying to log into your bank, put this code in. There's, we say, we call it multi-factor because in a perfect world, you know, everybody would have two or three or four factors to really, really ensure security, but it gives our, this program gives us the ability to use a cellphone, an app on the phone, answer security questions, for the little ones, it actually, it's cute, it lives an opportunity to pick a picture. So your name is John, and which one of these, you put in your password, and which one of these pictures is the picture that you selected? So it gives them a little bit of that experience as well.
Okay, and so it's not necessarily a picture of the student, rather, if they...
A cat, a dog, a ball, you know, a puppy, you know.
Okay, that's great. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, and last but not least, on our information action items, we have Dr. Thompson Griffin. We have a request to approve district-to-district transfers. And this includes incoming and outgoing students?
Good evening, board president Sebag, board members, Dr. Green. Office of Enrollment Services is presenting to the board for a recommendation for approval the district-to-district transfers for those students entering Jackson Public School District and those students leaving Jackson Public School District.
Thank you. Board members, any questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Thompson Griffin. Okay, board members, so we have heard and had the opportunity to ask questions on items A through K. At this time, if there are no other questions, I'll take a motion to approve those information action items.
I still move, Dr. Sebag, this is Cynthia Thompson.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Is that Ms. Johnson? Okay, so Ms. Thompson has made the motion to approve items A through K, Mrs. Johnson has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I believe that was everyone, any opposed? Okay, the motion passes unanimously, thank you, board members. Next, we have our consent agenda item for finance. All of the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda item for finance?
Still moved.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved, Ms. Hilliard has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Any mays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, we have the consent agenda items general. All of the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda item general?
I still move.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved, Dr. Luckett has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Mays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, we have the consent agenda item for personnel. All of the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda item for personnel?
Still moved.
Second.
Good, Ms. Johnson has moved, Ms. Hilliard has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Any mays? There being none, the motion is approved. Is there a consideration to hold an executive session? There is a consideration to hold an executive session. Okay, board members, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the meeting to consider the need to go into executive session.
Mr. President, I move that we close the meeting to consider going into executive session.
Who's that? Who provided the second?
I thought it was Dr. Hairston, but...
Board members, can we get a second?
I second it.
Okay, Dr. Luckett had moved, Ms. Thompson, Mrs. Thompson has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any mays? There being none, the motion carries. Thank you to the team tonight for being here, we appreciate all of you for all of you do, everything you do every day.
Yeah, thank you.
Your team members?